Going to call this meeting to order. Good evening and welcome to the City of Montebello Planning Commission meeting. Today is March twenty one, two thousand and twenty three. We get the roll call?
Yes, Chair. Good evening Commissioners. I'll go ahead and take roll call. Chair Cuevas?
Here.
Vice Chair Del Rio?
Here.
Commissioner Lomelli?
Present.
Commissioner Alec Casanian?
Present.
All members of the Commissioners are here and we have a quorum. Thank you.
Okay, if I can get everyone to please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So the next item on the agenda? Try this, might work better. The next item on the agenda is corrections to the agenda. Are there any?
There are no corrections to the agenda for tonight's meeting. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So then the next item is the the public comments section. If someone can please read that paragraph?
Sure thing. At this time, the general public may address the Planning Commission on any items listed on tonight's agenda, including non-agenda items or items that are not listed on the agenda, but are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. Please be aware that the maximum time allotted for members of the public to speak shall not exceed three minutes per person and state law prohibits the Planning Commission from taking action or entertaining extended discussion on any topic not listed on the agenda for tonight's meeting. And again, please show courtesy to others and direct all of your comments to the chairperson. Thank you.
Thank you. So the next item on the agenda is staff communications. Is there any?
There are no staff communications today.
Thank you. Okay, the next item, minutes. We have meeting minutes for February twenty one, two thousand and twenty three. The recommendations, the recommendation is to approve the meeting minutes. Do we have a motion?
I was a year shot abstaining.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of February twenty first, two thousand and twenty three.
I approve the motion or I second the motion.
Thank you. Do we need the roll call or can we just?
Okay, so I'll go ahead and take roll call on that item. Chair Cuevas?
Aye.
Vice Chair Del Rio?
Aye.
Commissioner Lomelli?
Aye.
And let the record reflect that Commissioner Alec Casanian is abstaining because he was not present at the last meeting. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And the next item on the agenda is the continued public hearing for item number two.
Once again, good evening Commissioners. Item two on tonight's agenda is a continued matter from the meeting that was held on March sixth. This item relates to a request for site plan review to allow the addition of floor area to an existing warehouse building located at one zero two nine and one zero three seven South Maple in the City of Montebello. And we have staff present and Stacy, our associate planner, will be providing a presentation to the Commission. So I think it would be appropriate at this time to open the public hearing, correct? Yep, thank you.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing.
Good evening Chair and fellow Commissioners. The item before you is a request for a site plan review application to allow the addition of a fifty four, fifty four thousand, two hundred forty four square foot, square feet of floor area to an existing fifty three thousand, six hundred seventy one square foot warehouse building on the properties located at ten twenty nine and ten thirty seven South Maple Avenue. The project is categorically exempt from the CEQA, from the California Environmental Quality Act. Next slide please. The slide before you shows an aerial view of the subject property delineated in red. The project site is located south of Washington Boulevard and west of Maple Avenue. The project is made up of two parcels, therefore an application for a lot tie to hold the two continuous, contiguous parcels as one site shall be approved prior to the issuance of any building permits. The combined lot area is two hundred and one thousand, three hundred eighty one square feet or four point sixty five acres in size. The existing building footprint measures fifty three thousand, six hundred seventy one square feet and the proposed addition measures fifty four thousand, two hundred forty four square feet. Next slide. The subject site is zoned M one for light manufacturing with an industrial land use designation. The project site is shown delineated in orange. It is bounded by industrial properties directly north, south, east and west. Next slide please. The existing building is operated by Royal Paper Box Company, which works on designing and manufacturing custom packaging for products. The proposed warehouse and office addition would allow the business to expand operations. The subject site is made up of two parcels with existing buildings situated on ten thirty seven South Maple, as shown in the orange, and the proposed warehouse and office addition shown in blue. The proposed project is in compliance with the development standards set forth in the zoning code. Next slide. The project is considered a class thirty two and categorically exempt per section fifteen three thirty two infill development projects. Next slide. Lastly, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt resolution number zero one twenty three approving the proposed site plan review application with conditions and is categorically exempt per section fifteen three thirty two, class thirty two, infill development projects. Thank you, this concludes my presentation and I'm happy to answer any questions and our applicant is also in attendance this evening to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? I have a question, just for clarification purpose and maybe for the audience and maybe for people watching on video or TV or online. What the size of a building triggers a site plan review under the current zoning requirements?
Currently for any commercial development, anything larger than five thousand square feet.
Low threshold, thank you. My opinion, sorry.
Yeah, I agree.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Is the the applicant?
We do have common cards as well.
Okay.
We have four speakers.
We'll give the the opportunity to the applicant to come up and address the Commissioners or the Plan Commission?
Good evening Commissioners. My name is Roy Fruto. I'm the architect for the project and we appreciate the help from the staff and we've read all your conditions and agreed to them. And if there's any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Thank you. Do we have any questions?
I don't.
Okay, thank you sir. It looks like we have no questions for you. Thank you. Okay, can we read off the speaker cards?
Sure thing. First speaker is Ralph Velador and.
Good evening Chair, Commissioners. My name is Ralph Velador and I'm here on behalf of the Southern California District Council of Laborers, Laborers International, United North America, and more importantly, our members that live right here in Montebello. All too often, we see projects come up, additions, projects like this where our members could rightfully work, work at and we were never approached in order for our members to work that live right here in Montebello. And and we think that, you know, that's something that a planning commission in the city is incumbent on doing is making sure that there's a community benefit. And where do we see a community benefit? When we got to drive out of town and go other places to go to work, when there's opportunities right here. There's projects that come up within our city and we should make sure that we benefit our local workforce that live here, that play here, work here and live here. And we pay taxes here and we, and we understand that this is a private project, but we would like you to take a better look at something like this and make sure that it's going to be built to a high standard, which our craftsmen know how to do, that we're going to not have, bring so many outside contractors, subcontractors to come and work on this project, therefore taking the money that could be used here in town and taking it to far off places. We want to make sure that some of that, you know, is done and we want to make sure that the, that the workers that are going to work on this project are, you know, are taken care of and that the contractor is having compliance with local wage ordinances and making sure that they're getting a proper wage and breaks and proper safety measures are taken when they're built this project. So that's one of the reasons why us union members, you know, we'll take pride in what we do because we built things right the first time. We, we do things safely and, you know, we want to come home to our families and, and, and bring that, that money home to be spent here in town. So please, when you, when you look at this project, make sure that there's a real community benefit to the residents that live right here in Montebello. And again, we do oppose this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I, I have a question for you, if you don't mind. And other Commissioners may.
Yes, sir.
Also, I think I heard somebody. You sure? You can go first. Okay. So the only reason that you're opposing the project is mainly because the labor force union has not been approached to participate in this?
As far as I know, none of the contractors we work for have, you know, know anything about this project, nor our union knows about this project. And, you know, there's projects all over town and not just here, but in, in outline areas where, you know, we drive by every day on the way to work and we're like, why don't, why don't our city or the surrounding cities do a little more like the City Valley does to make sure that the local workforce is included in, in the projects that are, that are going on or at least trying to, you know, make sure there's some, some local hire element within, within projects. I understand it's a private project, but it's not just the union thing about it. It's like, how do we know how many local people have been working on this project? It's a fifty thousand square foot addition. And one thing I know our union does well, because a lot of us work in industry, we do a lot of, we do a lot of these projects, a lot of commercial buildings and tilt up buildings, you know, some of the people we work for do these buildings all, all day long with Altman's and Fulmer and you'll see these, these tilt up buildings go up all over the place, commercial buildings go up all over the place and we have a large workforce that work in them. But I hate driving to Riverside and I, and I hate having to drive to San Bernardino, build them. We have an opportunity to build it right here. You know, some of our members that are here tonight are here because they care and because when they get home, it's too late to even spend time with the family. And it's incumbent on us to make sure that we provide those opportunities for our community. So we're just reaching out to you and letting you know that we want to make sure that we have opportunities like that, you know? We drive all over the place to work and this would be an opportunity for us to work close to home.
Thank you. I think someone else has a question, so if you don't mind, standing by. Oh, that was your question? Okay, all right. Any other questions?
Is that something that we have the ability to do?
That's a good question for staff and.
So I.
Thank, thank you, sir.
Yep. Thank you. I think we should be cautious of dialoguing with the, until we get through the, and then maybe talk as a, as a body. I don't know, the City Attorney might have other suggestions. However, I will say that it is something we could do when it's government projects we have control over. In this case, this is an applicant on a private property and within the city and it's a site plan review and I think the Chair alluded that the threshold is five thousand square feet, which is very low. In the City of LA, I believe it's fifty thousand square feet. With that said, does not trigger a development agreement. So typically, these would be negotiated with, if a development agreement applied. In this case, it does not, so we don't have the flexibility to go after those types of public benefits that would require, you know, to use local labor. So in this case, because it is site plan review, again, the threshold is low when it comes to imposing conditions, so.
Thank you.
All right.
But, but it doesn't necessarily mean that they're not going to hire.
That's correct. It would be up to the, that's correct.
Okay, all right. Thank you. So next speaker card?
The next speaker card is Daniel Gilberto Bermudez. All right.
Good evening Commissioners. I'm Daniel Bermudez, Gilbert Bermudez, and I'm here tonight to oppose this project. We as construction craft laborers have the skills to build this project and I'm time again, and, and I seen time and time again, developers coming in our communities and build with no real benefits to workers who live here as myself and others and my brothers and sisters. And driving past local commercial projects right here in our community, I'm traveling to Los Angeles or Orange County to provide for my family. As, as, as a union member, I've been trained to the highest standards and I want an opportunity to work here at this project and other like this in my, in our community. I lived here in Montebello for thirty six years. I vote here and I work here. Thank you for giving me the opportunity of speaking tonight and it's an honor.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it, thank you.
The next speaker would be Ernesto Pantoja, I believe? All right, you got it.
Good evening Chair, Commission members. My name's Ernesto Pantoja, here on behalf of Sergio Rascón, Business Manager of Laborers Local Three Hundred and our over eight thousand members that live within LA County, many in Montebello. Obviously, you're absolutely right. I mean, you guys have no leverage over this and that's not what this is really about. This is about us coming to you as a body, as a governing body, and being able to get developers to sit down with the local unions, not just us, the entire building trades and the community members that live in your community. It's, it's going on now, there's conversations with the building trades already about bringing in a community workforce agreement that allows for local hire. But the thing for us is when we see developers come into these cities and build everything while our members are driving past those buildings and driving to Inland Empire, some to Lancaster, Palmdale, those areas, when they could be working out of their own backyard. And as my, my brother Ralph Velador said, you know, that's two or three hours on, on the freeway every day that they're missing out with their family members. And one of the other things people don't realize is we all pass by construction sites, but we don't pay attention to the people wearing the hard hats. A lot of those are our members, members that we try to bring in to give a career. We give a, a preventively wage jobs, health benefits for themselves and their family members, a pension. Now we have to, we have an annuity and a pension for our members. But the bigger thing is we give a lot of opportunities to people who normally don't or can't find a job, people who are formerly incarcerated. I'll tell you about a gentleman who was from Montebello, had to move out, him and his family, because he couldn't afford anything, or he couldn't afford a purchase, but he was a, a ex Eighteenth Street gang member. Tattoos and everything you look at him, you'd be deathly afraid of him, but he's a good guy. And he's been a laborer now for seven, eight years, you know, struggling, but he's making it happen. But what if you would have given him those opportunities to work here in the city instead of him having to go chase jobs outside? We, we bring in a lot of veterans, a lot of women. The big thing for us is trying to bring in women, even homeless. We have a homeless veteran that, that was living out of the VA in West LA and got into the purple line and has been there ever since. So we're the type of organization, we open doors, we give people second chances, in some cases, a last chance to turn their life around, give them an opportunity to buy a home and, and build a family. And so that's the only reason we're opposed to this project is because we want to see more of our people being able to work on these projects. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker would be Gonzalo Ramos? Thank you.
How you guys doing, all members? My name is Gonzalo Ramos. I'm actually like one of those guys that my brother over here just mentioned. I was incarcerated for a long time, misused, misguided and everything. And I don't know what I was looking for, I guess just an opportunity. And the reason why I'm here is because something like this happened in my city where I'm from and because of a job site that opened up, I was able to, I was given an opportunity to join this brotherhood and it completely changed my life. I mean, I've been out of trouble for like ten years already and it's a life changer and somebody in your city, it is, it's going to benefit if you work with people like this. I, I really beg for you guys to maybe sit down with this guy, deny him right now and just talk to him. Maybe he can do something to help the city, you know, it's, it's a ripple effect. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, if there's no other speaker cards, I can close the public hearing.
That concludes. Sure.
All right, we'll hold off for that.
I'm an old guy. My name's Jose Garcia, I'm also a member.
Mr. Garcia, is it okay if he turns it in after?
You can turn it in after, we'll just add it to the file.
Okay, yeah. My name's Jose Garcia, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I wasn't, but just hearing, you know, the dilemma that we have here. I understand this developer's, it sounds like he's been in this community for a long time, since nineteen forty two. So what better show of good faith than somebody that's benefited from this community for so long than to use local labor, local vendors, local contractors? Keep it in the city here. You know, we need to find a way, I know because it's a public project, but in good faith, you know, a lot of times things are done in good faith and in good faith, him being here in this community so long, you would think, hey, let me help my brethren around me, because who's going to be inconvenienced from the construction noise, from the dust, from the traffic? The community. So why not work with the community and make it an all around solid project saying, hey, you know, this project, this, this business has been here so long and they took the time to work with the community, to work with the taxpayers here, the ones that are going to be inconvenienced. So I just sat there and I thought, well, you know, maybe if it's not a, a public, maybe you guys could do something in that way, you know, because that we're, we're more and more falling into a work shortage and if we continue to outsource our work, you know, we're, how are our own local community members supposed to live? Where are our rents supposed to come from? Not even a house payment, rents. Rents are out of control, food is out of control. I haven't ate an egg in about two weeks. Damn chicken. I don't know who's coming first, the chicken or the egg, but you know what I'm saying? We're, we're not, it's better that we work together, you know? Family that prays together stays together, so family that works together, community that works together, something like that. Let's get something done, go back to the table and see if we can work something out.
Thank you, sir.
Oh.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Discussion, Commissioners, any?
I guess I have a question for the staff. I mean, are, we sure this doesn't violate any CEQA exemptions? I mean, there's attorney letter here. I know there's no reasoning why they don't believe that it violates it, but they say that it doesn't. You'd assume that they have some type of merit behind their letter. I mean, like we're confident in our position?
I, I, I think I would defer to the City Attorney, but when, when we prepare for these projects, we do, do our due diligence and we, you know, we, we review the CEQA guidelines, for example. We look at the thresholds and then we make a determination based on fact. And I think in this case, our CEQA exemption is based on fact and, you know, obviously everyone's, uh, has an opinion, so we, we do vet it through the City Attorney's Office and they do sign off on it. So we, we work in collaboration.
Okay.
And they, the, the firm had enough time to discuss their letter.
There's nothing. It looks like it's a copy paste and it's not even signed by an attorney.
Correct. So based on that, we have the idea, you know, supporting the gentleman's bill of engagement, present evidence to the commission and it's the firm that submitted the letter, wants to come into the meeting or make efficient comments and was welcome to.
And if I may, so they did submit an email today basically saying they didn't have any further comments and that they won't be in attendance tonight during the meeting. So we did receive that email.
Am I mistaken or have we seen this firm pop up on other CEQA stuff?
They have in the past before for many projects.
Close to Montebello, from Oakland. Looks like, and they're from Oakland, they're interested here. Okay. Just wanted to check.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? No? I, you know, I, I think the union members present today do make a compelling, you know, case in terms of, you know, the city having, and I don't want to speak out of, you know, the the ability that we have as a deciding body in terms of, you know, what our qualifications and what our limits are in terms of, you know, approving or denying a proposed project. But, you know, you, you did indicate, Mr. Palombi, that there, unless there's an agreement with the city of some type, because this is a private project, not a, a city project, you know, our ability to negotiate with union labor is limited. But is there anything else that can be explored in terms of, you know, what the city can do to, you know, I don't know, compel the developer, the builder to possibly consider that kind of, you know, contract negotiation? I mean, we, we know that union labor is usually better skilled labor and it makes a difference in, you know, terms of construction and, you know, this is the department that approves construction. So the concern about building right and doing it, you know, per code is there. Not to say that the city is not going to make sure that the building is built, you know, to code and meet the minimum standards, but, you know, the code is a minimum standard. Union sometimes exceeds that standard, so, you know, just, just a conversation. Again, our ability to deny something based on that may be limited. So just exploring that conversation would be, you know, helpful for us at least to kind of know.
I, I hear, I hear, I, you know, I hear loud and clear and I, I, you know, I'm a huge advocate for supporting local, especially. I mean, I'm a product of that. And I grew up in, in an area where, you know, we had a project staple center that benefited my community big time, right? So I, I hear the, but on the other hand, there's our, our ability, I can tell you this with, you know, it's very limited to, especially in these, in these circumstances. You know, without a development agreement, it's really hard and this project does not trigger a development agreement. But I, I think it would be prudent to allow the applicant to maybe provide a rebuttal and maybe respond to some of these comments. I think that would be appropriate if it's a. I think that would be appropriate if it's okay with the Chair.
Okay, sure. Thank you. Because, and also, we, we did comment on the fact that if, if, if we approve the project without that agreement that they're going to hire union labor, doesn't mean that they're not, although the union has clearly indicated that they have not been reached out to or there hasn't been any contact by the builder or developer, but doesn't mean that it won't happen or it can't happen, right? Okay. All right. Any other comments about this or anything else, commissioners? Nope?
No comments.
Okay, so I think we've exhausted all conversations. Is there a motion on this matter before us?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and make a motion to, where is it? Oh, to approve case number PC two zero zero, two zero two two, zero zero one two SPR for the addition of the fifty-four thousand, two hundred forty-four square foot building adjacent to one zero two nine and one zero three seven South Maple Avenue.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll go ahead and second.
Thank you. Can we get the roll call?
Sure thing. Chair, Chair Cuevas?
Aye.
Vice Chair Del Rio?
Aye.
Commissioner LoMelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Alec Casanian?
Aye.
That is approved for all.
Thank you and thank you for the speakers tonight and the applicant. You know, I know that you're the architect and your ability to negotiate is limited, but, you know, hopefully this gets back to the builder and considerations are made to, you know, reach out to the, you know, across the aisle literally and see what you can do to help our community because if you want to, you know, the building to stand as long as the original building, you know, has been standing with good skilled labor, I think it would benefit the builder to consider that. Thank you. And I hope you don't mind me saying that. I think I'd have to open the public hearing or is that appropriate at this time? Sure, come on up.
Your help, but the thing is, you know, we got to have the project approved before these guys get here, okay, and help us, okay? But the thing is, if we don't get it approved, nobody's going to win. Okay? And basically, I work with union contractors. I work with the company Alston, Millian Stevens, and several other ones, okay? The thing is, we got to get the project approved and then we have the opportunity to get to the contractors. And if they're going to stop us from this thing, then nobody's going to win. Okay?
Good point, sir. Thank you. Appreciate that.
The owner of this, this property helps the churches with other functions. Or there's a church down the Maple that's pretty active. They, he lets them use their property for parking and for other functions too. So he's not a person that, you know, doesn't help the community.
Thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate your comments. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Moving on to the next agenda item. Planning Commission orals. No comments, no, nothing? Okay. And so I guess the last item on the agenda is the adjournment. This meeting's adjourned now. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.